Yeah, right. You're, yeah.
We are now live. We are now, we are now live on GMTV.
All right.
Do we have a quorum?
Jerry's here, he's filling out a piece of paper.
Okay.
And we have Chase on the line too, right? Well, I guess we'll...
Yeah, I'm here.
You want to change the view, Mr. Chairman, so you can see everyone equal size, or just, you have two different options, or just the person speaking, I don't know what's better for you.
I mean, as long as you can see a name, that's fine, but I mean, we're eventually going to need that for presentations, right? That's what, that's, is that right?
And to share in the screen, I don't know, are you allowed to share the screen?
Joe, Joe will handle that, yes. The presentation or the presenter, right, of the ranks, or text amendment will be chosen.
Heller will be able to, okay.
Right.
Which I think you might have lost, see there. Let me see, three, we have the blue arrow, Carl, if that's true.
I would show all, I would do like you said, everybody.
Yes, sir.
I'm here.
Yes, sir.
Is that Harry Heller?
Yep.
Thank you.
So there's a, there's a, there's a thing you can push to, so they're all larger, is that right?
Yeah, right, right hand side, Carl, go a little bit, a little bit, that thing, go down, right there, yeah. There you go.
Okay. And Dave Rose.
I'm just going to call out some names because we're just trying to take attendance, you know, for the minutes. Clint Brown?
He's here.
Yep, you're representing?
I'll put the GBU, uh, president.
Thank you.
Sam Alexander.
Sam Alexander's with Scott. Justin's with Scott.
Justin's there as well, okay.
Streeters are...
You have to get him in.
Streeters are here?
Yes.
Mr. Rose is here?
Yes.
Oh, he came down.
Okay, I think I...
Mr. Rose, Mr. Rose.
I think I have everyone written down now.
Mr. Rose is here.
Yes.
Justin, Chase Foster?
Here.
And Mr. Keeler now has come in.
All right. So it's six thirty-three. I'll call the July meeting of the Groton Planning and, City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission to order. First thing is to call the roll and establish a quorum. So we have Mr. Rose, Mr. and Mrs. Streeter, Mr. Foster, Mr. Keeler, Ms. Bergeron, and Mr. Kunkemoller. Did I miss anybody? All right, so there's, we have six people. I'll seat Mr. Foster's typically an alternate, but I will seat him for tonight. So we have a quorum. First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from May eleventh of 2020, the special meeting. Is there a motion?
One minor correction, if I...
It's gonna, we should get a motion first, then we can...
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
All right. A motion, we have a, oh, I, I'm sorry. One thing I like to remind people to do is when you're speaking, to please tell us your name, so we can accurately understand who's, who's talking, so...
Sue Bergeron, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes.
David Rose second.
Thank you.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion?
One minor correction, under Section Two approval. My name is misspelled.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I will correct that. I'll take care of it.
All right. We've got one, one correction. Anything else? Any other comments? All right. All set? All right, all those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
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 Or do I need, no, should I, do I need to call the roll?
If you have all favor aye, opposed, and abstentions, as long as you have no opposed or abstentions, you can announce in a test.
Okay. So we, I'm sorry, so I interrupted, so all those in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion, the meetings, the minutes are approved, six zero zero.
Six or seven? We have seven.
No, I have six. Right?
No, you should have seven.
You should have seven.
Well, that's right, you have seven. Sorry, my, lose my ability to count. All right, let's see, the next item on our agenda is receipt of applications, and we have no new applications, correct?
That's correct.
All right. New business, there's no new business. And so now we're, next item is old business. So the first item there is coastal site plan three one eight, site plan four seven five, electric boat T lot adjacent to building eighty. And we have received a letter from EB requesting that this be delayed to the August meeting, correct?
That's correct.
All right. So there's no action there. The next item on the agenda is zoning amendment, it's a text amendment, TA two zero dash one, section five point four, which is a new section authorizing planned development district. The applicant is GBU Capital LLC, and we will be opening a public hearing on that application. And so then I will read the public hearing procedure. I, Paul Kunkemoller, the chairman, would like to open the public hearing for the text amendment application. TA dash two zero dash one, section five point four. The purpose of this public hearing is for the commission to receive input from the applicant, proponents, opponents, and all interested parties or citizens who wish to comment on the aforementioned application. It is important to note that once this application was received by the commission, no member of the commission may comment on or discuss this application with any other member of the commission, the applicant, or applicant's agents, member of the public, or interested party, except during the public hearing proceedings. Once the hearing is closed, commission members may only discuss this application with commission members during deliberations. This hearing is being recorded, and meeting minutes are being documented. Anyone wishing to speak shall do so from the podium. Please state your name, clearly spelling your last name for the record, and provide your address. Please speak slowly into the microphone and reintroduce yourself each time you speak. The commission uses the following procedure during public hearings. Each hearing will be introduced. The applicant or designated agent will present the application. The commission staff will have the opportunity to ask questions and provide comments. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address staff and commission questions and comments. The chairman will ask for public comments in the following order. Comments in favor of the application, comments in opposition to the application, comments that are neither in favor or opposition of the application. Any questions to the applicant, staff, or commission shall be addressed through the chairman. The chairman will pose the question or questions to the appropriate party or parties. Please limit public comments to how the application does or does not comply with land use regulations or the plan of conservation and development. The applicant will then have the opportunity to address public comments and questions. The commission and staff will be provided further opportunity to ask additional questions and offer further comments. These may be directed to the applicant or a member of the public who previously commented or submitted information for the record. The applicant and members of the public will have only one opportunity to respond to commission and staff questions or comments. The commission will then decide whether to close or continue the public hearing to a future date. Once the hearing is closed, the commission is unable to hear additional comments or accept exhibits or correspondence in favor, opposition, or with a neutral position of the application. The commission will then deliberate upon the application. Deliberations will occur in, during a meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Deliberations will be posted on a meeting agenda, and the public is wel, is welcome to listen to the commission's discussions. Agendas are posted a minimum of twenty-four hours in advance of a regular or special meeting of the commission, and are provided on the city's website and at the city clerk's office. During deliberation, commission members will discuss the application with input from staff. The commission will take into consideration relevant testimony and information provided by the applicant and members of the public. Following deliberations, the commission will then vote on the application. Vote outcomes could be to approve, approve with conditions, deny, or deny with prejudice. Are there any questions regarding these procedures before I open the public hearing? All right, hearing done. We have a, is there something to be read for the record, Carlton, in terms of the announcement, or is it...
I think you want to read just the, like, the applicant, the text amendment, right, that goes with the evidence pieces.
All right, so we're going to open the...
You don't have to read them, you have to just say that that's part of the packet. You're not going to read fifteen or eighteen pages of text amendment, that's what the judge is going to do. But what's in, what's in the application, what's in that packet, is what you want to refer, refer to.
All right, so we're going to open the public hearing on text amendment TA dash two zero dash one, which was filed by GBU Capital LLC. The, this regards the text amendments to zoning, new zoning regulations to add section five point four, planned development districts, and subsection five point four point A, mixed use development districts. These amendments seek to establish and create regulations for a new floating zone district. The application is on file and available for public inspection. And the doc, there's a, the, the text amendment is summarized in a filing that was received at the City of Groton Planning and Zoning Department on April twenty-seventh of 2020. So I guess we'll, we will start off with Mr. Heller, are you going to speak for GBU?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and to the commission, my name is Harry Heller, GBU Capital, and I represent the applicant GBU Capital. Also, this is a team, and it's Clint Brown from Laurodon, Indiana, who is our design consulting engineer with respect to the project that we hope to bring forward to the commission in the event that the regulations that we have proposed are adopted. As you may recall, we appeared before the commission on an informal basis last fall to discuss the concept of a floating zone and to preliminarily air our proposed, our client's proposed development initiative for property within the Five Corners District. Currently, you have no planned development districts of floating zones enabled in the Rock, City of Groton zoning regulation. So we have proposed a section five point four, which is an enabling regulation, which would enable the City of Groton Planning and Zoning Commission to adopt through the legislative process planned development districts within the City of Rock. This evening, in addition to section five point four, we are also presenting to the commission a proposed mixed-use development district, which is provided in legal structure in proposed section five point four point A of the text amendment regulations. We envision that in the future, if the City of Groton Planning Committee, Planning and Zoning Commission adopts the concept of floating zones, you may want to consider future floating zone applications that come before you, which could be led in sequentially as additional regulations under section five point four, which enables your planned development district. Section five point four point A proposes a mixed-use development district, which is a district pursuant to the regulation that we drafted, which only can be utilized in the waterfront business and development district and the Five Corners zoning district. The text amendment requires that in enacting the floating zone regulation, that the commission consider the municipal plan of conservation and development, and in this presentation, we will enunciate to you how we feel that this proposal is consistent with the plan of conservation and development. This regulation enables urban scale development. We looked at the underlying regulations of both districts, and initially, we had intended to just land, allow the landing of the mixed-use development district in the Five Corners district, but in discussions with your prior planner, Mr. Godere, he felt that it would also be a success in the Thames River district also, both of which are currently designed districts under your regulations. So we have incorporated the potential to land this floating zone in both of those zoning districts, although our client intent is to utilize this regulation to bring forward a development initiative that would be in the Five Corners district. This draft mixed-use development district regulation would allow development at greater intensity than that which is currently allowed under your underlying zoning district. In order to foster development, particularly in the Five Corners district, I hearken back to the language in your plan of conservation and development that indicates that developing a sense of place is a theme which is critical to good comprehensive development within the city limits, and it indicates that there currently is no sense of place in the Five Corners district. We believe that the potential development that this regulation will enable will provide developers incentive to invest money and to desire to develop in the Five Corners district in a way that is economically viable for a successful project. And I would submit to you that maybe, there are many reasons, but certainly one of the reasons that you have not had successful development in the Five Corners district is that there is not sufficient economic develop, economic incentive in your current regulations to incentivize a developer to come forward with a project in that district. And the regulation which we have drafted creates the legal framework and structure for significant development initiatives that may occur both in the Five Corners district and the Thames River district. And we believe that the structure provided in this regulation is essential if the City of Groton is serious about encouraging significant economic development within those two districts. And as I'm sure you know, with development in any area, you have to establish critical math. If you get one good project, that incentivizes other investors and other developers to invest money within that district, and we believe that this regulation provides the framework to do that. Now, a floating zone is a zone that doesn't exist on your zoning map until such time as a zone change application is submitted to your planning and zoning commission, and you review that application and make a decision that that is appropriate development for the location in which it is proposed. And as your staff has indicated to you, the process involves both a zone change where you land the zone on a particular parcel or parcels of land, as well as a text amendment. And the text amendment component of the application is that the applicant is required to submit to you a master plan, which is not a fully engineered plan, but which provides the commission with sufficient empirical data to make a determination as to whether or not that use or that combination of uses is appropriate in the location in which it is proposed. And in conjunction with an application to land the floating zone, if approved by the commission, it would be approved both to land the zone on that parcel and then to approve the master plan, which is the roadmap for development which must occur in conjunction with that application. In that case, it is very different from the Euclidean type zoning that you have in your municipality and that most municipalities have in the state of Connecticut, and that you have the opportunity to review a development plan with sufficient information to make sure that the architecture fits, which is consistent with the village district classification that you've given to both the underlying zones in your current zoning regulation, and also with sufficient information to evaluate the impact on things like traffic, stormwater runoff, water and sewer capacity, public safety protection, and those types of parameters in your evaluation process before you land the zone and approve the master plan. So we feel that this is an excellent tool for encouraging development within both the Thames River district and the Five Corners district. The regulation which we have submitted to you sets forth in detail the procedure that the Planning and Zoning Commission must follow in adopting a zone change to land a mixed-use development district, as well as to pass a text amendment to adopt a master plan. In acting in that capacity, just as you're being asked to act this evening, you would be acting in a legislative capacity. Connecticut law grants municipal planning and zoning commissions the broadest discretion available in the variety of land use applications that may come before you in exercising legislative authority, and that is the authority that both this regulation and law gives you when considering to land a floating zone and to adopt a master plan. It also indicates with significant detail the submission requirements in order to constitute a completed application for the development of a master plan, in order to give the commission the information that you will need in deliberating on a specific proposal to determine whether or not the proposal, both as far as scale and location, as well as design, is appropriate for the location in which it is proposed. The district allows both residential uses, multifamily uses with height limitations of sixty feet or a lesser amount that is deemed safe by your public safety personnel within the city, which exceeds the height requirement currently in either the Thames River district or the Five Corners district. Again, these are parameters that we've built in to the regulation, which we feel are sufficiently reasonable to both be consistent with the scale of development that you're trying to encourage in this, these two zones to develop a sense of place and a sense of community, as well as to incentivize developers to invest money in your city. It also allows commercial and recreational facilities within the mixed-use development district zone. We have some comments in the staff report from your planning consultants that I'll go over in a few minutes and address some that we agree with, it's not that we disagree with, but there are some comments on provisions that we've specifically incorporated, because to the extent possible, we've tried to be consistent with some of the regulations that you adopted in the two underlying zones. The regulation sets forth a, the procedural requirements for the adoption of a mixed-use development district and the adoption or approval of a master plan. It recommends an informal preliminary review with the commission, and thereafter describes the procedure for a formal application to your consideration. It requires that if the zone change is granted for a mixed-use development district, that the applicant is required to provide the commission for recording in the town clerk's office and with the zoning office, an A two survey that delineates the boundaries of the zone change as approved. It contains the various components of the master plan submission, which are a key map, delineation of adjoining and adjacent land uses, existing strength features, proposed land uses, information with respect to proposed buildings to be developed in mixed-use development district, architectural renderings and floor plans, although not design construction drawings, a circulation plan for both vehicular traffic and pedestrian traffic. We submit, in formulating the language of this regulation, we were cognizant of the fact that you have significant employers located within walking proximity to properties in both of these zones. So we've tried to develop a regulation which will encourage pedestrian friendly development with less reliance on motor vehicles. Water supply and sewage disposal information must be provided, a stormwater management plan, as well as a stormwater quality renovation plan, erosion control, a traffic impact study, a pedestrian impact study. And rather than relying upon Euclidean parking requirements, we're proposing in this regulation that an applicant for a mixed-use development district is required to submit a parking analysis prepared by a licensed professional engineer specializing in parking and traffic design and use, in order to make a determination as to the actual parking load that the proposed development will, would require. And then that analysis, if... And then that analysis, if agreed to by the commission, would be incorporated into the vernacular of the master plan. A signage plan is required so that you can evaluate signage, because as your plan of conservation and development indicates, even with urban-style development, there are certain characteristics of a development that are critical to creating a sense of place and a sense of community, and signage is an important component of that design element. It sets forth the procedural requirements that must be followed by the commission in acting on a zone change application and master plan application, including a requirement for a public hearing, which is required with all zone changes, and notice requirements, and how the commission may take action on the zone change and text amendment regulation. It sets forth the decision... I'm sorry? I thought someone said something. It sets forth the criteria for decisions on a zone change application and master plan approval. Again, enunciating the parameters that exist in the broad legislative commission that a zoning commission has under Connecticut law. Once the zone change application is approved and the master plan is adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, the applicant would then need to come before you with a second application for site plan approval, which would be a fully engineered site plan in which the commission's discretion is much more limited. With the site plan review, you would make a determination that, number one, the site plan application is consistent with the master plan that you've approved, which is the guideline for development in the district. And secondly, that it complies with sound engineering practices and meets all of the engineering parameters required to bring the project to fruition. With that, I'd like to go through the memo that was submitted to you by your planning consultant, Mr. Alexander and Miss LaFountain, dated July 6, 2020. All of the estimation contained in that staff report concerning what this application is about, what procedures must be followed by the commission, and what the components of the application and the proposed regulations are, we agree with. I'd like to go through point by point the changes that are suggested by your planning consultants and tell you the applicant's position with respect to them. Number one is change all references of town plan to the city plan. We agree with that. Number two, request an elimination of a sentence from section 5.4.8.1, which is erroneous, and we agree that that is erroneous and should be removed. Number three, it should be clarified that the master plan amounts to a zoning regulation amendment in conjunction with a zoning map change to end UDT. The second sentence, 5.4.8.2, should be changed to read, "The master plan will be subject to review and approval by Planning and Zoning Commission as a zoning text amendment." And we would submit to you that the master plan is both. It's both a text amendment and a zone change. So we think it would be more appropriate to say it's a zone change and zoning text amendment alongside an application for a zoning map amendment to fund, but subject to public hearings, et cetera. We agree with that language. Number four, section 5.4.8.1.4A notes that adequate access for emergency vehicles must be provided for structures with 40 or more residential units. They suggest that it be revised to provide adequate access for emergency vehicles for all structures. We agree with that change. Section 5.4.8.3.1 notes that a keping application must be mailed to property owners within 200 feet of the proposal, whereas section 5.4.8.2.2.1A lists the requirement as 500 feet. This should be made consistent with other applications in the City of Brock, which require a 200-foot notification buffer. We agree that the notification buffer should be 200 feet. However, I don't necessarily agree that we should eliminate the application requirement of listing the property owners within 500 feet, because by statute, property owners either within the zone change area or within 500 feet of the zone change area have the ability to file a protest petition with the Planning and Zoning Commission, in which case the approval of the zone change requires a supermajority of both of the commissions. So we feel it would be useful for you to have information submitted in the application that identifies who the property owners are within 500 feet, although notice is only required for those within 200 feet of the application.
So I'm sorry, can I stop you there?
Sure.
So we would be notifying people within 200 feet, but listing people within 500 feet, is that correct?
That's what I'm suggesting, yes. Again, I'll leave that up to your consultants to advise you on that. We're all right with it either way, but I wanted you to understand the rationale behind why we made that distinction in the regulation. The next proposal, section 5.4.8.2.4A, gives discretion to the city planner in making determination about the application. We feel there should be consistent requirements for the discretion be left to the commission. We recommend requiring ten paper copies for all applications and potentially shifting discretion regarding the scale of the plan to the commission. That's certainly something that we would leave to the commission's discretion. We feel that there should be direction as to what's required, and if there are to be discretion granted with respect to procedural requirements in the submission, that there be a procedure established to define that discretion. Typically, the planners act in a professional capacity. We understand that the commission members are all lay volunteers, so we felt it was more appropriate for the professionals to make a determination and advise the commission as to what the essential elements of any particular application submitted may be. But whether you desire that discretion vested in your planning consultants or in the commission, the applicant is fine either way. Section 5.4.8.2.4.4B sub I notes that the key map shall be 1 inch plus 1,000 feet. They recommend changing the language to read "a key map at a scale suitable for the site showing the location." We're fine with that, although we feel that it may be helpful if there was specific direction to an applicant or an applicant's engineer in reading the regulation and determining what is submitted. Section 5.4.8.1.3A notes that no residential uses are permitted on the first floor. The commission should consider whether or not such a strict limitation is necessary or desirable for all instances where the mixed-use development district is used. Developments are certainly able to abide by this if they wish. Either way, the applicant is not married to either proposal. The reason that we incorporated the provision is because in the underlying district regulation, you have a prohibition, at least with respect to buildings strutting on the street, for having residential units on the first floor. So that's why we carried that forward, so we're fine with the regulation whichever way you decide. We just thought in a mixed-use district, you might want the applicant to commit to some minimum amount of commercial development in the district. Section 5.4.8.2.4.4B currently states that the commission may require the items listed below. We recommend changing the language to read, "The following items are required. If the applicant feels that a certain item is irrelevant to their application, they may request that the commission review the application without submitting that item." The commission will have the discretion to determine whether the item is necessary. We agree with that language. Section 5.4.8.6.1D requires 10-foot sidewalks. The commission should determine whether or not 10-foot wide sidewalks are necessary in all situations. Now, we have incorporated into the regulation, just so there's no misunderstanding, 10-foot sidewalks along existing city or state streets or highways, but not interior to the project. We provided for 5-foot interior sidewalk. And the reason that we used the 10-foot requirement is not out of any desire to build concrete sidewalks that are 10 feet wide because they're expensive, but again, because we felt that the language in the underlying zoning district required that, so we carried that forward. And we would submit with the 10-foot wide sidewalks, it gives a greater ability to incorporate features, whether they be park benches, variations in lighting fixtures, tree scape along the road. It just provides a greater ability for the developer to create something that's nice and again, goes towards that plan of conservation and development goal of creating a sense of space, something that will be nice, be inviting, and will encourage people to come into your city. Section 5.4.8.7.1 notes that a 10-foot front yard setback is required for all buildings. This may be limiting if buildings strut the street. The commission should consider whether the setback requirement is necessary. And if we're going to have a 10-foot sidewalk requirement, by necessity, the building is going to have to be set back 10 feet from the street. If the commission feels that a narrower sidewalk requirement than 10 feet is acceptable, the applicant is comfortable reducing the setback down to whatever you determine is an appropriate sidewalk width. Section 5.4.8.9 allows for modifications of the proposed plan after approval to incur as part of a site plan application, instead of a process involving a public hearing. The commission should determine whether or not a public hearing would or should be required in all modification processes. I'll leave that up to the discretion of the commission. Typically, in this type of regulation, we have incorporated provisions that allow what I call the minimalist changes that may be necessitated as we go through the final site design process. And you'll see in the regulation, we've incorporated a parameter of a 10% change, either a reduction in scope or a change in allocation between residential and commercial uses, or an increase in residential use. But again, that's something within the commission's domain, and whatever you decide, the applicant will comply. So those were the comments received from the planning consultants, which we felt were constructive, certainly gives the commission some boost of thought on several items that require commission discretion, and depending on where you land on those, we can certainly draft the language that will incorporate the direction that we received from the commission if there is ultimately a vote to approve the zone change application and incorporate these provisions. Again, I harken back to the fact that the plan of conservation and development indicates that there is no sense of place in the Five Corners District, in the Thames River Business District. You have not seen the kind of changes that the commission had hoped for when the zoning regulations were last revised. We believe that this regulation is consistent with the plan of conservation and development because it incorporates provisions with sufficient discretion to allow a developer to incorporate those features that I've just discussed that help develop a sense of place. And I would also submit to you that significant economic development in these two districts in and of itself will change the landscape and encourage additional development, which we believe will be a benefit to the city. And this regulation provides the latitude that a developer will need to be incentivized to make that kind of investment in your city. So that concludes my presentation this evening. I don't know if Clint Brown wants to add anything, but we'll certainly try to address any questions the commission may have from your planning consultant. And thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Mr. Brown, do you have anything to add?
Just one quick comment.
I'm sorry, introduce yourself, please.
Tools really are kind of the ultimate mechanisms to take care of what has been a traditional shortcoming in zoning practice for the last many years, in that you never know what you're going to get when you zone a property a certain way. However, with the master plan component, you get to see what that land use will look like, and you get to see the various characteristics of it, and it really gives you a vision of what the finished product will be while you're doing the zoning, and that, to me, is a tremendous benefit to your decision-making process. Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you... Your name and address, please?
Sure, it's Clint Brown, I'm a staff planner, associate with Laurel Engineers, 104 Hill Road, Rockton, Connecticut.
Thank you. All right, so I should have mentioned that our staff support for this project was provided by the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments Planning Office, Sam Alexander and Justin LaFountain. So first of all, I'd like to thank them for their help and welcome them to the meeting. And I guess I would give them the opportunity at this point to make any comments on the text amendment and give us any feedback based on the applicant's comments, so please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sam Alexander, Southeastern Connecticut Council of Government, 5 Connecticut Avenue, Dorwich. I think Attorney Keller did a great job going through our comments. Based on discussions with your own council, we'd like to kind of elevate the suggestion that we take a second look at comment 10 in our memo, which had to do with varying requirements contained in the master plan. contained in the master plan. We think it'd be appropriate to perhaps draft some alternative language that will allow the applicant to build wiggle room, if you will, into the master plan rather than relying on discretion at the site plan stage.
I'd jump in quick. This is Justin LaFountain, also with Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments, at 5 Connecticut Avenue in Norwich. It's comment 12 in the memo about that section 5.4.8.9. Essentially what Sam was just mentioning, that it's possibly prudent of the commission to look into incorporating into the master plan something like, in this certain area, we would allow for some wiggle room. That way, it differentiates between something like a flat figure versus a specific area where there's some leeway.
I'm sorry, was that about comment 10 or 12?
Comment 12.
So that had to do with the public hearings, then?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think so, with Mr. Alexander. He had said 10, I believe, but I think he was referring to 12. Mr. Brown, could you clarify?
Yeah, Mr. Alexander, could you clarify, please?
Yes, comment 12, sorry.
They were both speaking about comment 12, the same section.
Okay. Yeah, because there was also some discussion about comment 10, which was the sidewalks and the, you know, the possible need for some wiggle room there as well. All right, any further comments? Any other staff comments?
I'd like to thank Mr. Heller for his very thorough description. It went through everything very, very well for the commission. And just as a follow-up, the comments, basically from numbers 6 through 11, those were more areas where we just wanted the commission to be aware of some of the language, just to see what you would want to choose to do with those details. And whatever you end up deciding, we don't have a strong opinion either way, pro or con.
Carlton, anything from your end in terms of staff input?
Yeah, so I read this independently. I mean, we worked as a team together. Scott was a wonderful help in getting us off the floor on this one and getting us into a good position with the Heller, Heller, McCoy group on there. Even as independents, we picked up on some of the same things, the 500 foot versus the 200 foot, the simple stuff like the town planner. Also in there is the town attorney, we'd like that changed over to the city attorney. On there, you did also, we also picked up on the number of units, 40 units for the firemen for accessibility side of that. And I think all the other comments are now with our attorney, and he'll probably go through those very quickly. We had, we have one that was just a little bit arbitrary, I think, was the commission's on the bonding side of it, on the public improvements. They were may, and we were wishing it to be shall for the public improvements bonding.
Mr. Smith is referring, Mr. Chairman, to 5.4.8 as an apple, 11, which says the commission may require performance bonds to ensure the completion of public improvements. Mr. Smith is suggesting correctly, I believe, that the commission shall require performance bonds for the public improvements to make sure they are performed. The other section he was referring to was, there's two sections here. One of the sections, 5.4.8 as an apple, 5.5. C. And that is setback requirements, building proximity. It may be a question for Attorney Heller or the applicant. It talks about setbacks between buildings and structures within the mud shall be such as to provide reasonable access to light and air and access space for service fire protection and maintenance equipment and operations. Maybe just some clarity, what's that's referring to? These setbacks between buildings within the mud? I understand the general idea, but what is reasonable access to light and air and access space for service fire and maintenance operations?
Again, for the record, Harry Heller, I think the language is sufficiently definite to establish a framework for the commission to work in that would be supportable on an appeal. The answer to your specific question is, it's going to depend on the nature of the proposal that's submitted to you. If you have two buildings that are 40 feet tall versus two buildings that are one and a half stories tall, you're probably going to view those separating distances in a different light. So I think overall, it's going to be in the context of the development, and it's going to, in some sense, fall back on the goals of your plan of conservation and development. You're trying to create a sense of something here, and it's going to be whether or not it feels right and works.
So in some cases, you're suggesting perhaps that the buildings were shorter, one and a half stories, and maybe not too deep. You would just have pedestrian access, for instance, between the two, versus if you had taller buildings, perhaps you needed a fire truck actually to have the access to get an aerial ladder up to the building, something like that?
Yeah, yeah. And again, you know, the plantings that you may want to put between them, the whole development scheme. No, this is a regulation that's intended to create a framework, to create something that's nice and that's going to be appealing to people. And I think you have to provide some latitude where the law allows you to, to get that product that works.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's what we wanted to hear, was the intent.
Exactly.
Versus the verbiage here, and to understand that, because it's not spelled out so good. Now, we've got it on record.
Thank you. Exactly. Thank you.
All right. Any more questions or comments from staff?
None for me.
All right. How about commissioners? Questions and comments from commissioners? Anyone? Mr. Keeler?
Yeah, I'm all in favor of the floating zone, but I did have a question regarding enforcement. Will this complicate enforcement, because you have an underlying zone that you have to deal with, and then on top of that, you have a floating zone which serves as overlay on top of that? I guess maybe Carl, are you okay with this in terms of enforcement?
Well, yes, as long as the commission approves it. I think in the verbiage in the packet here, it said this becomes a superior over the existing zone, was the proper words that was used inside there. And the commission, that's the idea, is to give a little more flexibility to create some of these spaces here, and not to be as hard-pressed as, it's got to be 10-foot away. It appears that they're trying to give you the equivalent to be less, especially with taller buildings. But yeah, enforcement-wise, I think it's okay.
Anything else, Mr. Keeler?
No, that's good. Thank you.
I guess my question, Sue Bergeron, I guess my question is, if we say 10 feet for the sidewalk, does that give us the option, if somebody comes in with a different plan, and that plan only makes sense with 5 foot or 7 foot? Can we change it? Yeah, as opposed to saying only 5 feet, and then that's it, it's 5 feet?
And I, so Mr. Leclerc, do you have an opinion on that?
So if you have the regulation that says 10 feet, minimum 10 feet, the applicant can come in because there will be another, you'll have to land this zone, you know, it's kind of floating, if you visualize it, it's got to land on a certain piece of property or parcels. And then there's the, what's called a master plan, which is not the P O C D, it's a master plan specific to this. You're going to have to have some consistency, so, you know, I suppose you can go back and change the M U D D regulations that were for you tonight to reduce it to less than 10 feet. But I think you might have an inconsistency if your reg for the month says 10 feet, but the developer comes in and you say 5 feet is much better, so you don't have an inconsistency. You'd have to change it. I think, Attorney Heller, would you agree? How would you deal with that scenario where?
Yeah, for the record, Harry Heller, the way the regulation is currently drafted, it requires 10 feet. So if the commission feels that's extensive, you should establish a minimum. Currently, as it's drafted, 10 feet is the minimum, and that's what's required.
You may want to have a 5-foot minimum, and then when the development comes in, Attorney Heller, assuming he's representing a client, may show that it's 10 feet, 10 feet is better for the building, for the design, for the street scape, for everything, and you may go to 10 feet in that case.
Or you could, all right, this is Paul Kunkelmuller, so I guess you could also go with that, you know, less than a 10-foot sidewalk, but it's still a 10-foot setback, right?
Correct.
That's the other, that's the other way to control how close the building gets to the street, is to...
That's an excellent point. You could have a 10-foot sidewalk, and that requires a big piece of concrete in front of the building versus a 10-foot setback. Maybe 5, 6 feet of sidewalk, and there's a few benches under a shrub or something in front of it, or a few outdoor tables for outdoor dining. There's a lot of ways you can go with that to get your 10-foot setback, which is more visual than coming up.
This is Carlton, active planner. I think you want to, I think this is a good spot for you to talk about a little bit and understand, and understand that, because some of these buildings with a sidewalk can become very heartscape. And I think you've got to have that flexibility to understand that if I shrink that to a 5-foot, because of accessibility, right? We're going to, we don't want to bring that down so now we can't get accessible pieces down there. But recognize that we may have to shrink things because there's so much heartscape going on there. We lose the architectural feature, or as we called it, a place, right, as it's being called.
So it could make sense to leave the 10-foot setback, but, I'm sorry, Paul Kunkelmuller, but go with that, allow for a less of a, less sidewalk and to get a better sense of place?
Yep.
Justin or Alexander, do you have any comments on that?
Yeah, I think at 10 feet, it may not be appropriate in all situations, and it may hinder other parts of the development in applications other than that by GBU Capital. It may make sense to stress ADA requirements or other public improvement requirements that are applicable to the city or the Connecticut Department of Transportation, depending on which road this development is pressing on. So as long as a sidewalk is reading those minimums, then I don't think that it should be good enough. I don't know if you want to follow that up, Justin?
This is Justin LaFountain with Southeastern Council of Governments. Yeah, I would echo what Sam just said. The 10-foot requirement, when we were sort of creating this memo, one of our thoughts was, you know, if there's a development that wants to come in and it, for whatever reason, it just can't do a 10-foot, you know, it can do a 5-foot, but it can't do a 10-foot, we didn't feel like that would be a strong enough reason for it to not be allowed right out. So I think what Sam is saying makes a lot of sense.
And I would also add that if you were to keep 10 feet, you could be in a situation where a developer comes in that just can't accommodate that for whatever reason. And in order to do what they're proposing, they would first need to seek a text amendment to this section, and it would, it would just add, you know, additional layers and additional lumps to whatever they're trying to accomplish.
Thank you.
Do we have, Sue Bergeron, do we have a set sidewalk size at this point?
Well, I think that, I think that the 10-foot sidewalk was consistent with what already exists in the zone. If I, did I understand that correctly, Paul Kunkelmuller?
For the record, Harry Heller, that's correct. That's why we incorporated it. Certainly from our perspective, we're fine with building the smaller sidewalks if that's what the city wants. And as your plan is indicate, it provides greater flexibility, particularly on a lot of your lots in the Five Corners and the Thames or the districts of small lots with spaces pressured. It does provide more flexibilities to do other treatments.
Thank you. Other questions or comments from commissioners?
For the record, Jim Streeter, I guess I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact of my concern with the mixed-use development districts. To draw a statement by the mayor, we'd like to have as many tools in our toolbox as possible, especially in the economic development area. And I foresee in the future, including areas west, on the west end of Bridge Street, as well as the east end of the corner of Road, east of Mitchell Street. I don't know if now is the time to bring it up or not, but I like those words. We want to encourage the economic development to our city, and I think those two areas in the future, just as the Five Corners and the Water District on Thames Street are important to us, I think those two districts in the future are also going to be important to us.
Thank you. So Paul Kunkelmuller, so then the way to, I mean, we could address that in a future text amendment to add those areas, or we could talk about adding them now to this. I don't know, are those, are they sufficiently defined that we could, you know, I mean, because we're talking about, right now, we're talking about defined development districts, right, in the waterfront business residential district and the Five Corners District. So I don't know if there's sufficient definition in the regulations to expand at this point, or...
This is Carlton Smith, this is David Brown. The west of Bridge Street would be in the G C area, which is, you know, you would be taking on a whole different thinking over the two zones that are being requested in this application, and I think you'd want to stay with the application. I think those are future thoughts on there, because, you know, when you start looking at the properties and the parcels, it could be challenging. You know, all of a sudden, you go, well, wait a minute, I think I know what here.
Again, for the record, Harry Heller, the types of changes that your planners have recommended, in my opinion, are within the scope of the normal iterative process in a public hearing, and do not create any due process issues. But I think if you expand this to something beyond the two zones where we've identified as zones where this regulation could land, that would be an expansion that does have due process implications and would require that the public hearing be re-known if we're going to make that kind of a change.
Exactly what I was starting to say, Chairman, that is an issue, you know, the way that, that's not what the applicant asked for. And if we did, you did as a commission, decide to expand into that... you would have to open a new public hearing for due process. You could certainly do it at a later point in time, of course. You know, because you have, you know, under this proposal, you have planned development districts. You can amend your rights at a later point in time upon the commission's application to go into different zones under a new subsection calling it a different district or expanding the M U D D in those districts. So you have a flexibility in the future, just not now unless you want to have another public hearing.
Okay, got it, thank you.
I should point out, there is, there was no one next door, I just checked. There was no one in the large, the public hearing. You may want to inquire to the members of the public. I don't know that we have any of this at this point, if you can comment as well before you close the public hearing.
Yeah, yeah, okay, that's, that's a good, that's a good point. I, anything else from the, from other commissioners, any other questions or comments?
Oh, yes, David Rose. I thought we wanted to make these areas pedestrian-friendly and making the sidewalks narrower. Better cut down on that, wouldn't it?
Well, that, I mean, that's a, that's certainly, I think that's certainly worth discussing. It's, I guess we would, yeah, so we're, you know, if we say, if we say it has a minimum of five, right? Or a minimum of eight or?
A minimum sidewalk size and a minimum setback size.
Right.
And then as each application comes in for the zone change, you can evaluate whether it should be the minimum or it should be larger. Minimum is obviously that minimum.
So if, if, if we were to say a minimum of five, the commission could still require it to be larger if it, if it was appropriate for the proposal?
Good development, sure.
Or could we say a minimum of ten and change it to five?
Well, that's the problem. If the question was, can you say a minimum of ten and then change it to five? Well, obviously in your regs, a minimum of ten, you'd have to change the M U D D requirements to five as opposed to just for the, just the, the master plan.
So if we're saying, so we've seen minimum five, then we, or we use an E D A reference as was suggested, then we could, minimum does, doesn't bind you to no, no greater than that, right? You can, you can, you can require more, but it, you, it can't be any less without changing the, right? So we could, we could, we could add, yeah, I guess, you know, so this is Mr. Kunkelmuller again. So I guess one of the, one, I guess one, one question I have is, you know, the, how much, how much, you know, ability does the commission have? How much discretion does the commission have in, you know, based on, you know, approving or rejecting an application for a mud based on the, on the, on the master plan? I mean, if the master plan meets all the requirements here, does it have to be approved? Or can the commission say, no, we don't think that's a good idea and that's, at that location?
You have, I, I want to, you can address that to Attorney Heller as he proposes by tomorrow.
I think he said it limits our?
You're limited to some extent, but there are provisions that, you know, you have your discretion as you look at the application.
Again, for the record, Harry Heller, representing the applicant. In, in the regulation, there are some parameters which are fairly specific, like setback requirements on the sidewalks that we've been talking about. Obviously, an application has to satisfy those hard requirements. But because this is a legislative action, when you're asked to adopt a zone change and approve a master plan, you have to make discretionary findings within the parameters established by the regulation. So you, you can't just deny it because you don't like it. But if you make a determination that it's inconsistent with the character of the area, if you make a determination that it will create adverse traffic impact that cannot be abated by modifications to the plan, if you make a determination that it will adversely impact adjoining residential properties or hinder the orderly development of neighboring properties, those are all valid reasons for a municipal zoning commission to deny a zone change. So you, you have broad discretion, but it's not unlimited discretion.
And Attorney Heller has those in his proposed regulations under five, four, A as in apple, four, criteria for decisions on change of zone master plan, exact points.
So we, so we have some discretion?
Yes, sir. You have to make your general findings to indicate the location, size, character, harmony, in conjunction, relationship, no unreasonable hindering, appropriate development, et cetera, compatible with the size, shape, and topography, things like that, that's in, that's in the proposed regulation. So when they come back, when an applicant comes back, remember, they have to come back again with the master plan under this proposal and the site plan. And that's another, treat it as a zone change, I'm sorry, as a text amendment change, another amendment to your regulations.
All right, thank you. Any, any other questions or comments from commissioners? All right, I have, I have a few, so. One of them has to do with the, the, it's, it's five point four, point A, point one, point one. And it talks about applicants and, and I guess my question about, about the language here is, is this, does that mean that all the property owners in a proposed mud need to agree to the, to the application? Or they just have to be notified?
No, they, they have to, again, for the record, Harry Heller, they have to agree because you don't want someone submitting an application. This is different from a general rezoning. This, this is a specific development initiative. And the reason we've included that language is typically, an applicant may not own the property, but may have an option on the property or a contract to purchase the property that's contingent upon getting the necessary approval. So that's why we've incorporated that language. But we want all owners of the property that are involved in an application, if they don't own the property, to consent to the application being filed.
All right, thank you. And then on, then the paragraph below was, there's a, there's talking, there's some, it's talking about, it talks about, it can be, you know, we can, we can do these in the waterfront business residence district or the Five Corners district, but they, the properties must be fully located within the district, correct? They can't be adjacent to it or partially adjacent to it. They all must be in what's currently defined as the district?
Yes, that, that's certainly the intent.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, just to answer your question, if there was a parcel that was partially within the district, of course, an applicant could come in to change the zoning boundaries with an application for that district, to that parcel, I should say, to put it within the W B R, for instance, so that would then come under a month. So there is some, there is some flexibility in a go-forward. If you have a parcel in two districts, you could have someone apply to amend the zoning map if that particular parcel was overlapped by two districts, if there are any.
So if there was a particular parcel that was outside the, let's just say it's outside the Five Corners district, then it, the mud application could include moving another parcel into that, into the Five Corners district?
As part of that application process, I would think one could come and say that, you know, I've consolidated several parcels. Four of them are within the Five Corners. One is partially within or not within at all. I'd like to amend the zoning map to bring that within the district. And then once it's in the district, then, you know, part of your mud application to land it on top of that parcel. So I think you've got that flexibility in a go-forward to do that. Should there be any parcels like that as part of the development?
Mr. Heller, was that, was that the intention?
Well, it wasn't my intention because all of our properties are in the Five Corners district, but I, I agree with the concept, yes.
And that, and that's, in the way the regulations are written, that would, that would be acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, it would require a separate application for a change of zoning district classification to bring an adjacent parcel into the district. But those applications could be run contemporaneously before the commission.
Thank you. In regard to the, so as we talked about, you know, that, that, the, all structures within the mud should be accessible for emergency vehicles, but the, that paragraph also says that they would contain a fully functional sprinkler system with all, within all buildings in the mud. Is it, you know, if, if we change the wording to say that, I mean, the way it was originally worded, that, that sprinkler requirement would have only, would have only applied to, to a mud containing more than forty residential dwellings. Do we want that to cover all buildings in a, all buildings in a, in a mud? That would, they'd have to, they would need to be sprinkled?
Well, your planner's recommendation is that it apply to all buildings in the mud, but the regulation is written in the alternative. If it's not fully accessible for emergency vehicle, and emergency equipment, then it is required to be sprinkled.
This is Carlton. Building code and fire code is going to also dictate some of this, regardless of what the planning department has for, on records. But you, you will have the building and fire codes that will probably require a mixed-use building like this. That would be sprinkled.
Okay.
Yeah, and that, we have to comply with all applicable regulations.
So would we need to know that before we write the regulation or?
Well, I, I think, I think our SCOG helped.
That was a third comment.
That was a third comment in there.
Right, I just, my question was, you know, they talk, I, I just wanted to make, to understand if that also applied to functional sprinkler system in every, in, in all of the, in all the residential dwellings, dwelling units?
And that's why I tell you the building code and the fire code are going to kick in, to put that in place too.
Okay.
I think the proposal from the, Mr. Alexander was, at which the applicant agreed with, was that all structures within the mud shall be designed to provide adequate access for emergency vehicles.
Right, but that, but that goes on to read and, and?
Or, or a fully functional sprinkler system. So I think the proposal was that take out the sprinkler system requirement, make them all have adequate access for emergency vehicles and then the state building and the local building code, take a hierarchy, what needs to be sprinkled.
Correct.
Okay, so?
That's correct, Mr. Alexander, I think that's what's being suggested.
Oh, yes.
Okay, so we would, so then we would, we would take out the, the language, I would say, continue?
Again, because you're dealing with small lots and tight spaces in both of these districts, that's why the regulation was written in the alternative. I, I think it might be remiss if you don't give the developer that flexibility. Either they have to provide full access or they have to sprinkler the building. That would be the zoning requirement. You know, absent any further requirements, it may be contained in either the building code or the fire code. But I, I think you should, I, we agree with the recommendation to take out the forty unit threshold, but I, I think it'd be remiss if you took out the alternative nature of the regulation.
That's something we can talk about during deliberations.
Okay. But, yeah, I just, I mean, yeah, but if we, if we close the public hearing tie, we can't ask?
Correct, correct.
Again, we can't ask these questions again, right?
We don't have to resolve it right now.
Right, well, I'm, yeah.
Questions have to be.
And I think you'd want that, something like that to go back to the fire department also, so they understood.
All right, so we had a notification?
We have your own comments from the fire department. Mr. Chairman, if you submit a suggestion, you may want to keep the record of the hearing open and to get comments if you feel appropriate from the fire department, fire marshal, fire chief, as to this.
Yeah, I would think we would, we'd certainly want to do that. Look, I'm sorry, looking through, reading through my notes here.
This is Jim Streeter, we were knocked off the internet up here, so we're on the phone.
All right, glad you're still with us.
Yeah, she's getting the other extension phone now.
Hi, this is Irma.
We hear you, Irma, we hear you, Jim.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
All right, are there, are there any members of the public who would clerk, who are on the phone and would like to comment on the, on the text amendments? Anybody? Is there, is there a way to tell if we have anybody on the phone?
I believe that is Mr. Streeter or Mrs. Streeter. Both Mr. Streeters are the two numbers on the bottom, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
The same number.
I think the only one we haven't heard from on your panel tonight is Mr. Foster. If Mr. Foster does want to say something because you sat, you did sit him tonight?
Yes.
On the air, yeah, there he goes off of, on the microphone, he's on microphone.
Yeah, Mr. Foster, any comments, questions?
I do have a question. I mean, there's, there's the potential to add a bunch of residential units. And I'm not sure if it's appropriate to put this here, but is, should we have a cost of service analysis?
I'm sorry, a what?
A cost of service analysis or impact to, you know, some of the public services provided?
Oh, for example, water, sewer, power, those kind of things?
Water, sewer, and power listed on here. I'm just thinking primarily the schools. I mean, I'm not, you know, a single use of this is probably not going to do much, especially, I don't, I don't think there's going to be many families that are going to be moving in. But if we start adding a bunch of these, I'm just, I'm just curious if it's worth having any language to that.
What, it's, it's, it's not an unreasonable question, I don't think, but I don't know how we, I mean, is that something that we typically do with these kind of, with this kind of a text amendment? Or would that be more of an issue when there was actually a mud's presented or?
Well, if you don't have it in the regulations, they won't have to, they won't, you can't, you can't rule on it to say, I don't have this. They didn't need to provide it, it wasn't called out for in the regulations. This is between, this is between the commission here and the applicant. If you feel that that is necessary, and one of your commissioners have brought it up, it's a very good question and I think you need to talk about it. With, with our, with our staff attorney here. I, Justin is still on from SCOG and I think he's, he's also thinking about it, I think. I'm just calling because I can see you, Justin. Sorry, but I can see you, thank you.
Don't worry. I, I guess I can jump in and this is sort of just a, actually, this is Justin LaFountain again with Southeastern Council of Governments. Typically, when a development like this goes into place, it's not going to have a dramatic impact on a school system. Apartment buildings such as this typically don't. It's not an unreasonable question. I, I think it might be a tad overreaching. My thoughts also go back to the fact that there is a housing need in both the city of Groton and surrounding areas due to the new workplaces and expansions that are occurring. So it's, it's something the commission can definitely consider. I'd be curious to hear my coworker Sam's thoughts on it too. But that's my, that's my first reaction for it. But that's my, that's my first reaction for it.
Yeah, I, I echo what Justin said in terms of, um, the, the family structure that typically can have is the development like this. It's, it's typically not a large number of school-related children, if that's one of the concerns. I guess I'll add that we provide, Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments provided the city with a tool for estimating community service impact from residential and commercial and industrial development. So that's something the city could utilize if they wanted to somewhere along the way. In terms of incorporating it into the regulations of an application requirement, it's probably a question that's left to your council.
If I may, Harry Heller again, representing the applicant. I don't know what SCOG's current demographics are, but the projects that we've seen over the last five or six years are generating about two-tenths of a school-aged child per unit, and those are the two-bedroom units. So I, I think it's a non-issue. The other thing, I, again, I don't know what your situation is in Groton, but in a lot of the towns where we work, we found that there's excess capacity in the schools now, that the school enrollment has actually decreased, and they have more physical capacity than need. So, so what we've found by and large is that it's, at least from a school perspective, it's become a non-issue.
Thank you. Were there, I mean, Mr. Foster, were there, were there any other services that you were concerned about that?
No, I think that's sufficiently answered the question.
So it's, it's something we may want to look into, but it, I mean, we can, again, it's a, it's a deliberation discussion. There's, there are no, there are no public comments. We, sounds like we want to keep the public hearing open. Now, one of the things, I mean, we've, we've agreed on making some wording changes, so how do we, and, how do we, and, I mean, can, can we, can we appro, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I think, that's a good question. I think you agreed to keep the hearing open to get, I believe, the fire department and fire marshal comments regarding whether you go with both the access or sprinkler system, you know, see what the fire department's position is then on these buildings. Attorney Heller volunteered at the beginning, if there were any amendments, that, you know, he'd be drafting them. He and I can coordinate proposed language. He's absolutely correct regarding whether we need to have another public hearing and read notice. I don't know that anything I'm seeing here is substantive enough at this point from what we've talked about to require a, a whole new public hearing. The changes, these are minor or ministerial enough. I think we're okay, and the public's had adequate notice of this. You know, if anything, you're going more restrictive or less restrictive, so.
Yes, Harry Heller, again, for the record, I would agree with that. I, I feel within the context of what we've discussed this evening and your staff comments, that we're within the bounds of due process.
So we would keep the public hearing open?
I think you keep the public hearing open for the purposes of the fire marshal, and then we can, you know, we can give you some language, the, with Attorney Heller and the COG gentlemen, to come up with that language and, you know, present it to you, and then you, as the commission, could, you know, make an amendment. It is not just a yes or no necessarily to this application, and you could make some amendments to the text proposal before you and incorporate those in in your deliberations, and, and we can indicate whether they were consented to by all parties.
Okay, but we, yeah, but we, but we need to have those changes in front of us so that we can read them into the record.
Correct. We would have this for your next meeting. If you want to go back to the public hearing, you can keep it open for the purposes of the fire department, fire marshal. You can close the public hearing, go into your deliberations, and for your deliberations we have in writing some proposed amendments based upon the discussions this evening that you may want to make to this proposal before you, if you're disapproving.
Okay. So we have a motion to keep the public hearing open until August?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, will it, will it be the second Monday of August?
That's a really good question.
Good question. Is there a scheduling issue that you folks have? I take it that's what you're asking?
Yeah, I'm not available on this night in August, the second Monday of August.
So it, it kind of depends on where we are.
I guess it's your own commission scheduling as well. Are you running against the clock? I think we have time. Carlton, Mr. Smith, there was a question by Attorney Heller if this is kept over to the next meeting. He's unavailable the second Monday of August.
So this, I was just conferring with some of my other staff on this. So we're, we have switched over to a Zoom platform, and because we've switched over to the Zoom platform, we don't have to be in competition with the CTP, whatever TV we got going, so we can go back to our regular meeting night.
So third.
So we're onto Zoom, so the third Tuesday of the, of the month. I don't know the date. I think it's the 19th, 23rd.
The 18th. I believe it's the 18th.
If you could just flip that calendar up one month behind you.
Third Tuesday of August would be August 18th.
Okay, just give me one second to check.
That's 18?
Yep.
It is.
If I may, if you, since you switched over to the Zoom, how does that satisfy having the public?
They can all get on public. They, they're gonna advertise it that way.
Okay.
And, and the, and the phone.
Okay.
So that meets the, that meets the state requirements?
It does, it does, and a number of municipalities we're about with are using Zoom as a platform now for these types of meetings. And it works quite well, actually, at the public talent. The moderator has significant control.
It shouldn't be allowed you to do that.
Mr. and Mrs. Streeter, will you be back?
Well, if not, we can, you know, either Zoom or call it.
And we can make sure any documents that are prepared for that meeting, we'll have them in time to get them up to them if they're not, any commissioner who is not here for whatever it is.
Yeah, we'll, we'll need those at least two weeks in advance of the meeting to mail out.
All right, Attorney Heller is the 18th work?
I think it works for me, yes.
All right. So we need a, I need a motion to, to keep the public hearing open until the August 18th meeting of the commission.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Keeler.
Second.
Second.
Ms. Bergeron.
Ms. Bergeron, any discussion on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion to keep the public hearing open is approved, 700.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So commissioners, please stay on for a second because we're gonna go to executive session. We have to stop the cameras, and we have to appoint who is gonna be in the executive session on there.
Do we, is there anything that we, do we, I mean, there's like, there are a couple of other agenda items. Should we run through those first, just?
I didn't want them, just to drop off.
Oh, okay. All right, so we'll, we'll do that before we go into the executive session, though. So we had a report of commission, anything from commissioners? All right, public communications, anything?
Nothing. Got any impact?
Uh, report of staff?
We're plugging through all the pieces that are coming at us.
So what's going on, what's going on at EB? Are they, I, I understand they're caught up on the drilling, is that?
They caught up? Oh, no, they're, we learned they're actually five months behind.
Oh.
They are now working Sundays. We, we had that request on Friday at almost 1:00 in the afternoon. Where they're drilling is past, past the Planning and Zoning Commission's action area on there. It's over on the coastal jurisdictional side. We had some complaints this weekend. I know the mayor's office went down, and seeing where they're, where they were drilling, we had the maps out early this morning. We had, we had the Mike Rosinsky from DEEP on the phone early this morning, and we all agreed that where they were drilling, where the action was doing, was well past the coastal jurisdiction line on there, and we don't have, we don't, we just don't have an enforcement tool to, to bring in on that.
So we're not in executive session, so they, yeah.
I did send out an email today to Joe Drake, who is in charge of the construction, and basically asked him two things. One was, in the future, he needs to put this out, it needs to come from them, not from us, because we put it out to the public because we found out late Friday. But more importantly, asked him to reconsider working on Sundays because even though it's outside the jurisdiction, it's not in the spirit of the, of the work arrangement, work agreement that we have now. I have not received, well, I received an out-of-message, out-of-office message from him, so he won't be in until like the 17th, but I sent it to him and several other high-ranking officials in Electric Boat.
Thank you.
Can, who, who's on the iPad and it's three, so we can get recognition?
This is Chris West.
Oh.
The GBU captain.
We just, we've never picked up your, your, your name for the, for the record tonight, sir. We kept looking over it. We thought maybe it was one of our, one of our commissioners, and thank you for notifying us.
You're quite welcome. Thank you all for the time tonight.
Yep. All right, anything, is there anything else? Any other commissioners have questions for, for staff?
The stockpile's going down at EB, as you can probably go by and see that, you know, that they haven't moved in there. It's, um, between the COVID, the machinery going down, breaking down for months on end, we're just behind.
Okay. Well, there's, I mean, we, we have, we have, you know, we, we can, we can ask them to, to follow the spirit of the agreement, but we have no real enforcement power, correct? Because they're in the, they're outside of our jurisdiction.
I, we, lately, for the, for the last week, we can have, we have been getting some calls with concerns of that they're going to houses that Electric Boat did buy on Eastern Point Road, that they were gonna tear them down and put a parking lot up in there. And I just want, in case the commission hears this, and we, we have no, we have not had any conversation with Electric Boat whatsoever in any regards that way, we have no application. They would have to change the zone, they're in a residential zone. I'm just trying to get the word out there in case you hear it. We've had a couple of email inquiries and phone call inquiries about it, and I don't know what started it, but sometimes if we all know about it, we can stop it, right?
I think what may have started it was in the newspaper, there was an article that the Southeastern Connecticut Council of Governments received a JLS grant in order to go to the JLS parking study for this, and so people are putting that with this together and say, oh, then that must be what it's about, and that's, it's a whole separate issue, but first of all, no one has come to EB or anyone, no one has come to us about it, but secondly, like Carlton said, you can't do it, it's residential. So it would have to, we'd have to have a zoning change, you'd have to come here, and that's, so that's that, but that is out there.
Thank you, I appreciate the heads up.
Yeah, yeah, not, not even a behind-the-scenes discussion whatsoever with, with Electric Boat.
Yeah, no, because I think, I think when, when, when that originally, when EB buying the properties originally occurred, I think there was some concern about that, but we had talked about that would require a zone change that, so it's not like you could, they could just demolish the house and build a parking lot. All right, that, that is the end of the agenda until we get to the executive session, so what do we need to do to move into that? We need to, thank you, we need to thank Mr. Alexander and Mr. LeFountain.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We also, we also should be thanking Ms. Ruskin and Ms. Patrick.
Oh, absolutely.
Ms. Ruskin, behind the scenes has, has done just unbelievable, all the way to 5, down tonight, 6 o'clock tonight, we were still maneuvering things around here because we were getting calls and, and, you know, just tremendous, tremendous help and attitude to, to make this happen, right?
Well, we've had, we've had tremendous staff support from the city, so it really has, otherwise we couldn't get, we couldn't do this without them, so.
So I gotta find out a phone number? Hold on, so I got a phone number that I gotta call, that they gotta call, Joe?
No.
All they can stay on.
You can control it, just the moderator, you can eliminate.
Okay. All right, so you're gonna, all the commission people are gonna stay on, and the, Mr. Alexander and Ms. LeFountain, you're gonna go off?
Have a good night.
Thanks you too.
Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As you know, you entertain a motion, entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss pending litigation, and then you designate who would go into executive session.
We want the mayor, we would like the mayor, myself, and the staff attorney.
Correct.
And then once, once you have gone into executive session, just please give me a couple of moments to grab this and take it out of the room and to turn the TV cameras off.
Okay.
And we'll stop the recording of the Zoom.
I stopped the recording on the Zoom.
Okay, that's fine.
But I have to stay on because I'm recording hosting, but I will walk away from the camera, so just let me know when you're back on, so I can start the recording.
And then, so we get off, the end of executive session.
I will turn this off as soon as you go into executive session.
So, we should have motion to begin.
All right, so we need a motion to begin an executive session to discuss pending litigation, inviting the members of the commission, Mayor Hedrick, the city attorney, and Mr. Smith, correct?
Yes. Let's discuss pending litigation.
To discuss pending litigation.
I did say that.
And that, and the commissioners, all the, including the commissioners who are connected remotely.
So moved.
All right.
Jerry Keeler.
Move from Mr. Keeler.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bergeron. All right.
Okay, just give me a moment.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? All right, the motion to go into executive session is approved, 700.
Just stand by.
Yep.
Take your time.
Yep, yep, it's all right.
And your staff, Mr. Chairman, did a great job setting up. You're one of the first communities in Connecticut that's pulled off a live meeting. We're aware, we've only had, one other town we know that's done this. Most towns are still not doing it, they cannot figure it out logistically and how to deal with public and public hearings, so we're a little ahead of the curve, you know, modeled here. Some of my colleagues are asking me.